Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 1:00 P.M., and we would like to welcome you to this meeting. Not exactly what we would have expected, but we are very proud that you may have joined us, board members in particular, wherever you may be. We appreciate you and your attentiveness, and for those who are with us, we appreciate you as well. At this time, I would like to ask the Honorable Rita Allison, our Chair-elect, to please lead us in the pledge. Ms. Allison.
Thank you, sir. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allison. In looking at Item 2, our approval of the State Board of Education minutes, is there any objection to approving the minutes as presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Item 3, the approval of the State Board of Education Agenda for today, January 9, 2024, is there any objection to approving the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. At this time, we would look at recognition of visitors, including news media, should they be joining us. I would just say, if there are any news media here, please introduce yourself. Well, hearing none, I do want to welcome all of those of you who have joined us online. Thank you so much for your interest in the work of our State Board of Education. Looking at the State Board Chair Report, well, you look at this one and you think, it's such an interesting day. Reminds me, it reminds me of a song 50 years ago this year. This song transcended country, it transcended gospel, it transcended pop. It was the song by Mary John Wilkin, co-author, and Kris Kristofferson, "One Day at a Time." And at this point, we have to look at this as dealing with where we are today and each day as measured in our days. And whether we are in person or whether we are online, it is our beauty and privilege to serve the state in this capacity. So please, I apologize for the virtual format, but the safety of our students and staff truly is our priority during this unpredictable weather that we're in. So I would like to say that and conclude the State Board Chair Report and turn it over, please, to our State Superintendent of Education, Honorable Ellen Weaver.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It is a lonely crowd here in the RCC today, so we'll look forward to next month when we are all hopefully prayerfully back together in person. But just, I wanted to briefly report today on something that I have shared with the Board previously, which is what we are calling Project Raise Your Hand. Everything that I report to you all, I try to always bring back to the Strategic 1-4-1-4 Plan that I shared with you all a number of months ago. And you may recall that one of our three-year goals on that plan was launching a community engagement project to support our teachers and our students within our schools. And so today, here at the Department, we had an incredible launch meeting with our office directors to talk about how we, as the Department of Education, are going to raise our hand to volunteer time, or to not volunteer time, but to provide time as support within our local schools here in our neighborhood. And if the Department of Education were zoned for a school district, we would be zoned for Richland 1. And so Richland 1, they are our neighborhood schools, and so we have reached out to district leadership and in collaboration with them, as well as with leadership within a number of local schools in Richland 1, we are going to be launching this agency engagement and support project. And so there is a one-pager that I will ask staff to provide to the Board as information following this meeting, just with a little bit more flavor about that. And in a moment, we will watch a video, which I hope that our folks online will be able to see again. We'll provide a link to it if for some reason it doesn't work. But I also wanted to mention on the instructional side that we do have instructional caravans that are starting for our new ELA curriculum. I believe those will start in Charleston tomorrow. And so we are very excited for the caliber of materials that has been selected and their alignment with our priorities here at the agency around the science of reading and ensuring that our teachers have the very best material in their classroom and that we also are not expecting them to go out and spend hours and hours and hours of their personal time curating curriculum, but that we are giving them something that is meaningful and useful here from the state level. So very excited about that. Again, there is a short one-pager that Mr. Ferguson has put together that we will send around to the Board following this meeting just as information, but those were two things that I wanted to call to your attention. And so as you know, during my report, I always love to be able to provide a moment of inspiration of something that is, something to celebrate that is happening in public education across our state. And so today, we are going to see a video that relates to Project Raise Your Hand and the power of volunteerism within our schools. Please play the video.
He doesn't need to be here. He's, just shows up out of the love for the kids and out of the love for what he's doing.
Not only is he just a sub, he takes time to know us personally.
It really makes me feel special that he chooses to impart his wisdom on the next generation.
Wound up going into the car business mostly. I actually had a job in high school working for a local dealership. So I spent most of my time in the car business. My last six years, I ran a body shop. Prior to that, I was in service. I even did sales for a while. I'm retired, so it gets tired sitting around the house, and I enjoy doing stuff. I almost look at this as a ministry, because I enjoy being around the young people.
It means, it means a lot for me as a teacher to know that someone like Jim, who is part of our community, is invested, that he cares about these kids, he cares about our graduates, he cares what happens to the future of our community. And it is an amazing, amazing investment on his part to make sure that these kids are okay.
Teachers love when they know they're out and he's the one that's going to be in there because he's going to do what the teachers want done, and he's going to do it in a manner that it's not confrontational with kids. He seems to have the gift of interacting well with teenagers.
He's had a long life full of work, and then he's getting up and coming here every day to spend time with us and talk to us and not just sit in his desk and watch us in the absence of our teacher. He's talking to us and just spending time with us.
I'm really glad that I came here because I do get to know them, and you know, that's just a good thing. When I first started coming, you'd see kids, oh, we got a sub today. And now I say, oh, oh, it's Mr. Hill. Well, okay.
When you look him in the eyes, you can, he's the type of person you can depend on, you know? So I mean, every single time that I see him in the halls, I'm like, how you doing, Mr. Hill? You know, it's, it's a good feeling that he just gives to students.
I've added 2,000 grandkids, you know, and I'm here for them. I enjoy it, I hope they do.
So not only
He's retired.
Not only is Mr. Hill an incredible substitute there at Rock Hill High School, but he also is the father of Stephanie Distazio, who is one of our longtime employees here at the Department of Education and just a really valued part of our team. And it just, it warms my heart to think of the possibility of all of the Mr. Hills and Mrs. Hills that are sitting out there in South Carolina, who would love the opportunity to be able to come into schools and support the journey of our students and our teachers here in South Carolina. So I'm so excited about the pilot that we are launching. I'm excited about the potential for us to ultimately be able to take this statewide, and I'm incredibly grateful for just the awesome work of the Committee of Staff here within the Department that have really led the work on developing all of the policies and procedures and the important details that are required for us to do this and to do this well and to be able to measure impact over time. So, Mr. Chair, with that, that concludes my report.
You are muted, Mr. Chair.
I can hear him.
I can hear.
I can hear.
For clarification, we can hear everyone except for the Board Chair in the room, so we're going to try to figure out what the audio issue is on our end. And next up would be parliamentarian comment, and so I'm going to go ahead and offer the Our veteran Board members will recall, last year at this time, filing a statement of economic interest as required by the South Carolina Ethics Act. It's that time of year again. Please note that your statement of economic interest is required by March 30 of this year. The State Ethics Commission website is the place to do that, ethics.sc.gov. If you need any assistance, their office will be glad to help. That number is 803-253-4192. So once again, get those statement of economic interests in by March 30. Now, one other parliamentarian comment today. Due to the inclement weather, as you all are aware, we are not entirely in person today. That makes the public comment portion quite a challenge. However, it has become the practice of this Board, and became the practice of this Board during COVID, that members of the public could email their public comment, and then staff for the South Carolina Department of Education will read those comments. We do have time restrictions that remain in place. We do have a limitation for the overall period of time for the public comment portion in place as well. And that will be the next item on the agenda. Do we have the Chair? Can we hear the Chair again? Dr. O'Shields?
What's the Chair-elect? Are you happy to take charge?
I'd be glad to, and so we're going to take that off.
That's right.
At this time, we're going to move into public comment. We certainly appreciate your interest in public education, and at this time, we are going to eliminate the five minutes to three. I ask for a motion for us to limit it to three so that we can take up 10 comments at this time, which would be more than we would be able to with the five. And since we're hearing your comments for the first time and seeing these comments for the first time, it's our policy to accept these comments for information, and then if you have any questions or need additional information, then we will contact you at a later date. So we thank you for your understanding today on the procedures that we will be bringing forward. So I ask for a motion to allot these 10 public comments to three minutes apiece.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Cardray moves. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? We will now move into the public comment session.
Our first public comment, being read aloud, comes from Lacey Lane. "I am a school counselor of 15 years and a mother of two children in public schools. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed changes to regulations regarding school and classroom library materials. Any State Board actions in this area should ensure maximum accessibility for students to diverse materials that are representative of the variety of student backgrounds and experiences in South Carolina schools. I fear that the proposed changes will result in censorship and the restriction of the intellectual freedom of our students. The proposed changes would be an extreme governmental overreach as there are already local policies in place. I trust teachers and school librarians as the professionals that they are to select books for their classroom and school libraries and not only support South Carolina curriculum and state standards, but also books that meet the unique interests and needs of SC students. Young readers need access to a variety of books from which they can learn about different perspectives, gain an understanding of others' lives, and develop critical thinking skills. There are already local Board-approved policies to guide the evaluation and purchasing of materials. State regulations will create confusion in a process that already has clear guidelines. As a school counselor and a parent, I know that children respond to authentic texts. They are drawn to books that accurately depict their lives. If we are looking to develop readers and lifelong learners, we need to capitalize on their natural inclination toward books they enjoy reading. The people and groups that are working to limit the intellectual freedom of others are doing so to remove materials that do not fit into their own narrow worldview. One group should not be given the power to limit the intellectual freedom of others, individual parental oversight and professional guidance of school librarians. Material selection policies should remain at the local level via district and school-approved policies. I am confident in the expertise of teachers and librarians in South Carolina and urge you to avoid burdening our educators with additional regulations that would add undue stress during an unprecedented teacher shortage. Thank you for taking my concerns into consideration."
Now we'll move to our next comment.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Superintendent Weaver and members of the State Board. Due to the number of public comments, Mr. Tyler and I will be alternating and sharing the workload.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next comment is from Emily Bacomo. Her comment is that, "I am honored to address you today, not only as a fourth-generation South Carolina public school educator, but also as a mom of two boys who both have a passion for reading. This school year marks my 14th year as a public school educator, eight of those years as a classroom teacher, and now as a middle school librarian. Additionally, I serve as the editor for the South Carolina Association of School Librarians, and I was recently named the Midlands Regional School Librarian of the Year. I cannot stress enough the importance of having a strong school library program and collection and the benefits that each provides for students in the school community. There is a huge misconception that school librarians are simply the keepers of the books and their buildings. However, the vast majority of what we do on a daily basis is curriculum-based instruction. South Carolina has impressive librarians all over the state working hard to serve all of our students. To honor that work, I thought it would be helpful to share a few examples illustrating how I support instruction through library programming at my school. One of my goals as a librarian is to develop a strong school-wide reading program. I have crafted my entire school-wide reading program for students, teachers, and staff to integrate library program goals with school and district goals for SC Ready. Students and staff are encouraged to read and log to reach a yearly goal of reading for 3,000 minutes. The involvement of teachers and staff has significantly increased the motivation of students because now it's a competition. Last year, our school logged over 1.3 million minutes, and so far this year, we are on track to surpass last year. As for our report card scores on the ELA portion of SC Ready, we saw an increase of almost 10 points and are now at 58% scoring at Level 3 or higher. Another way I support the curriculum and instruction in my school is through valuable teacher collaborations. I work one-on-one with teachers in my building to plan units and lessons, and I help them find resources they can use with students. My collaborations are not limited to the ELA teachers. I have worked with science, math, and history teachers as well. My school STEM teacher and I have collaborated and created an entire co-taught unit that has students using primary sources to identify the stages of the engineering design process. I have also designed innovative activities that challenge students to be critical thinkers. As part of the eighth-grade ELA unit on Edgar Allan Poe, I worked with our teachers to create an activity on Poe's Tell-Tale Heart. This lesson was set up as if the students were solving a cold case file, and can I tell you, I have never seen my eighth-grade students more engaged specifically, especially when the sheriff came. These were challenging lessons and activities that require critical thinking and higher-order reasoning skills. Recently, I worked with our social studies teacher in a local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution to provide our students with a unique learning experience to commemorate the 250th anniversary of the Boston Tea Party."
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I believe that our three minutes is up on that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tyger.
Our next comment is from Stephanie Patterson. "Thank you to all those who are serving as elected representatives or as educators, administrators, or support staff. I am grateful for the many gifts and perspectives you bring for the benefit of our common good. I am a minister and interfaith chaplain in Anderson. I have lived in South Carolina for over 20 years and have reared two children here who are now well-prepared young adults seeking to use their talents wisely and compassionately to improve our state. As a parent, I have consistently maintained confidence in the education and enrichment provided by our South Carolina public schools. My children have been challenged and enlightened by what they have read in classroom settings and by what they read after exploring the library. The educators and staff who help curate these collections of books and resources are well-trained, most having gained their initial degrees from our South Carolina universities. These teachers, librarians, and administrators are my neighbors and fellow American citizens, and I see them at sporting events, at the gym, in the grocery store, or at church. I trust them and know I could have a respectful and productive conversation with them if there was a situation in which I was personally concerned about a choice they made about a book or reading assignment. That interaction would be grounded in a relationship in which my child is at the center, and we would both understand the context involved. I am opposed to moving deliberations and decisions about the appropriateness of certain reading materials exclusively to the state level and thus bypassing the local community. To usurp the role of individual teachers, principals, and school boards by exercising power at the state is counter to the spirit of South Carolinians who have historically rejected government regulation and instead have championed the rights of the individual. I have seen what government overreach and standardization has done to education. It has stifled the creativity and autonomy of our best and brightest who serve our young. It has emphasized testing and certain kinds of achievement over the development of soft skills like emotional intelligence or empathy, both of which nurture good citizenship. These types of standardization, censorship, and oversight show a lack of confidence in the fantastic people who have given their very best to serve our children. Please let our friends and acquaintances in Anderson decide what our children have access to read. Let those with whom we stand, shoulder to shoulder, look at the beautiful, colorful tapestry of our community and choose which stories are worthy, stories that represent familiar perspectives and stories that give voice to experiences and situations that are vastly different from what we know. Have faith in us to work together to create an environment of learning that yields engaged, informed, and connected students." The next public comment is from Kay Main, I believe. I hope I didn't mispronounce the last name. Her comment is that, "I am writing to support the proposed Regulation 43-170, addressing uniform procedure for selection or reconsideration of instructional materials. After reviewing the regulation, I believe it should be accepted and implemented in its entirety, no amendments. This regulation addresses my concern of materials that I am finding in our schools, Lexington 2, and neighboring schools that I have information about from friends that contain obscene and pornographic material. This regulation provides clear guidelines and parameters for school personnel to purchase and ensure books and material are age-appropriate and aligned with our current state standards. It is uniform across the states; there are no discrepancies and confusion within, among, and between districts or schools, which is a massive issue in my district. It will ensure transparency within schools and districts, which my district does not currently provide, and it demands accountability with the Board of Trustees, Superintendent, District Office Personnel, and Building Principals and Staff, of which currently are all denying any issues of any type exist. With this regulation, we can get back to teaching the core subjects with quality materials and utilizing tax dollars to advance our children and their educational needs." Our next comment is from Catherine Ramp. "I have read the proposed Regulation 43-170. As an educator and parent, I am concerned with not just the content, but the wording of several sections. Overall, I am opposed to this regulation. I teach in Lexington-Richland School District 5. I am a graduate of Lex Rich 5, and my children attend Lex Rich 5 schools. I know Lex Rich 5 students, but you don't. What is best for our students may not be what is best for students in Chester or Hilton Head, et cetera. A one-size-fits-all policy fits no one, and it feels like government overreach for the state to take away local control that belongs to our school boards. South Carolina school boards, South Carolina school boards all have policies for dealing with instructional materials that they deem inappropriate. They should be able to continue to monitor and decide what is best for their own school district. Section 4 is problematic. Any person residing within the school district attendance area or a parent or legal guardian of any student who attends a school within the school district shall have the right to file a complaint requesting that specifically identified existing instructional material be discontinued for any grade level or age group and/or removed by the district board from all district schools. This is too broad and has the potential to waste valuable instructional time if teachers are asked to halve their classes for unverified complaints by individuals who do not even have children in our classrooms. Please consider removing this section as it is detrimental to educational progress. Much of Section 7 enforcement is problematic and subjective. Any response that the Board, in its discretion, deems appropriate. The wording of this section is troubling and subjective. Please consider removing it. This whole regulation will be a detriment to public education in South Carolina and will surely lead to an additional exodus of highly qualified teachers."
Thank you. Now we're up with number six in our public comment.
The next public comment is from Brian Linder. His comment is that, "I am a lifelong South Carolina resident and the father of three children currently enrolled in public school in the Ermo-Chapin area. I care deeply about my children, but am submitting this comment with the experience of all public school students in our state in mind. I believe we are strong enough to have books in our libraries that may not align with our own experience but may help a child with, for example, a different skin color to feel fully themselves. We are strong enough to allow our children to read books that tell the truth about past and present societal ills, even if it makes us uncomfortable. And we need books in our libraries that assure readers who may feel different that they can be loved exactly as they are. With that, I thank you for your time, and I'd like to have some thoughts by a hero of mine, Fred Rogers, read for the record today. It's the people, quote, "It's the people who feel strong and good about themselves inside,"
It's the people, quote, "It's the people who feel strong and good about themselves inside who are best able to accept outside differences, their own or others. We help children develop this ability every time we affirm how special they are to us for being themselves and how special to us all are all the things that make each person different from anyone else," end quote. And then there's a subsequent quote that states, "I think that those who would try to make us feel less than who you are, I think that's the greatest evil."
Thank you. Number seven in our comment section.
Our next comment is from Rebecca Gillum. "For at least 14 years as an educator in South Carolina, my hope has continually been to create reading lives for students. My central focus of my career has been to help students find a curiosity about the world and give them the tools to satiate their questions, mainly in the form of books. I felt particularly compelled to become a high school teacher when I heard that, according to Reading Partners 2023, a student not reading at his or her grade level by the end of the third grade is four times less likely to graduate high school on time, six times less likely for students from low-income families. Take that and add to it a 2009 study by researchers at Northeastern University that found that high school dropouts were 63 times more likely to be incarcerated than college grads. And you start to see how many arrive at the conclusion that anticipated prison beds are calculated based on students reading below grade level at the end of third grade. I realize that schools focus resources on third-grade readers down to pre-K, but I started to question who was going to help the students who made it all the way to high school and were already written off as those who struggled and were beyond saving. I knew that this was where I wanted to dedicate my life, my intellect, and my resources, creating reading lives for students who were statistically lost. However, with the proposed Regulation 43-170, I feel as though my training and passion to be a professional educator with a drive to create reading lives for my students has been questioned by my very own state school board. One of my colleagues said, 'I feel uncomfortable with every book, poem, and story now, and it makes me so sad.'" This proposed regulation intimates that educators are not the trained professionals who make decisions based on what they know their students need, and it also suggests that school boards are not prepared to allow for proper procedure to assess the curriculum that teachers are using to educate our citizenry. If a parent ever asks for their child to have a different novel, I will not question the parent, and none of the educators I know would either. The parent knows their child and their child's maturity level best, and we are always happy to provide an individual student with a different text. However, I do not believe that an individual parent knows all 125 of my other students or my curriculum map for them. Parents do not know the standards I am expected to teach within a specific timeframe. Therefore, while I certainly am willing to change a novel for a student if they ask, it would not be fair to ask teachers to revise curriculum based on an individual parent's disagreement with the task. I am also burdened by the consequences of changing a unit in the middle of teaching it. This regulation says that the district board should assess the curriculum in 60 days, but that does not allow time for the teacher to rewrite an entire unit or to reframe how it fits within a yearly plan. I have a strict plan for all four of the courses I teach."
Thank you very much. We move now to the eighth public comment.
The eighth public comment is by Carly Carter, and her comment is that "I am writing in support of Superintendent Weaver's proposed regulation for the selection of educational materials and books. As the Chair of Moms for Liberty in Anderson County, I have seen firsthand the need for clear definitions of what is considered age-appropriate. We need this guidance put into place so that the local boards can have clear, transparent conversations around the selection of materials for students within age-appropriate boundaries."
Number nine.
Our next comment is from Jill Slapnick. "Library books are purchased with local funds, not state funds. It should be up to the local school librarians and local school boards to select these materials. Most teachers have purchased their own books for their classroom libraries and are rarely given funding from the districts to develop their classroom library collections. We need to trust local districts to retain control of this. It is government overreach and big government when school employees are not allowed to exercise selection of their own reading materials for their students. And who knows students better than their own teachers and librarians? Librarians are trained professionals with real master's degrees and take specific kidlit and YA materials courses and learn about genres, book awards, professional book reviews, child development, authors, and illustrators. Book Looks is not a reputable professional book selection tool or review source. It is out-of-context excerpts compiled from Moms for Liberty hate groups. Collection development is the forte of the librarian. They are also experts on what their own students want to read and can make personalized reading recommendations. Remember personalized learning? But library books are not required to be read. They are for self-selected, independent reading. All students should be able to find themselves represented on the books in their library shelves. Books in curriculum should also depict true and accurate history. History books, historical fiction books, and nonfiction books should not be whitewashed. It is a shame that Black history books, or Holocaust books, or books about racism have been removed and banned in some South Carolina school districts. There are no Playboy or Penthouse magazines in school libraries. That would be pornography. A book that happens to have a gay main character or friend or secondary character with no more than a crush does not pornography make. Student First Amendment rights have already been trampled by banning books. Taking control from local districts would further erode them. Remover no taxation without representation. Libraries should have no collection without representation."
Thank you. We move now to number 10 in our public comment section.
The 10th public comment is from Melissa Masters, and she stated, "I am a SC parent, educator, and librarian. I have many concerns about this proposed regulation on school materials. Here are just a few. Our students have diverse needs, and all of our students deserve the chance to see themselves in books. A recent ruling by a federal judge in Iowa blocked their recently passed law that sought to ban books with sexual content because the, quote, 'laws sweeping restrictions are unlikely to satisfy the First Amendment under any standard of scrutiny,' end quote. Our students have rights. All of our students, even the ones we may not agree with, deserve to see their lives reflected in books. Also, developmentally and/or age-appropriate and profanity are too broadly defined in the regulations, which state that instructional material is not age and developmentally appropriate for any age or age group of children if it includes descriptions or visual depictions of sexual conduct. This would eliminate a broad range of texts from use even by older students. Books challenged under similar laws and regulations include religious texts, commonly appearing books from AP exams, anti-totalitarian classics, The Handmaid's Tale 1984, The Fixer, a novel about antisemitism, and many popular YA titles, The Hate U Give Twilight, which encourage some of our most reluctant readers to pick up a book. Likely bans under this rule include classics like Romeo and Juliet, The Odyssey, and The Scarlet Letter, and Of Mice and Men. If this regulation goes into effect as written, we are doing a disservice to our students. The state will open itself up to litigation, and we will lose readers. As a librarian, losing readers is tantamount to the worst thing I can think of. History shows us that banning books is never done by the good guys. Which side we fall on will be determined by whether we fight for all of our students' rights or just allow a minority of parents' rights groups. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. I want to thank staff for reading those public comments that have come in. We have seen them all on video also for people to read on their own, so we want to thank all of you who took time to send us those comments concerning. At this time, before we proceed, I'd like to check to see if Chair O'Shailes has had the opportunity to resolve his connection issues.
I am here. I don't know if you can hear me.
We can hear you, Chair. So, thank you so much, and we'll let you move on with the agenda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allison. Thank you very much. I was able to hear. I don't know quite what the gremlin was in the system. But as it relates to our state board items, there was no policy and legislative committee meeting today. They did not meet. As a result, we will move into our Educator Professions Committee Report. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Stapleton to present the Educator Professions Committee Report.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shailes. When the Educator Professions Committee met this morning, we did approve one action item, and that was approval of the new educator preparation program for Anderson University Bachelor in Science programs. There were no information items, and the committee did vote to place this action item on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stapleton. Thank you very much. In looking at the Standards, Learning, and Accountability Committee Report, they two did not meet, and I would move then to the Educator Licenseur Committee Report. And at this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Kremminger, Joyce Kremminger, to present the Educator Licenseur Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met this morning and took action on the following 10 cases: two public reprimands and eight suspensions. I would like to thank the Office of General Counsel and the wonderful job they did virtually for us this morning, and to our board members who put in a great deal of time reading over all of this material before we meet.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kremminger. The full board ratified the report of the ELC, so we will now move into our consent agenda. As you know, the consent agenda has been distributed, and is there a motion to approve? Please speak, and if you don't mind, give name so that we can have this for the record.
So, Kremminger.
All right. Board Member Kremminger made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second. Johnson.
Thank you, Joette Johnson. Second the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Now, very quietly, anybody? Motion carries. This time, I would like for the South Carolina State Board of Education Report, that would be brought to us by Matthew Ferguson. Dr. Ferguson.
Happy New Year, everyone. I am wanting to give everyone a quick update on our literacy initiatives. To begin with, Letters is starting its second statewide rollout. We have an additional 1,000 teachers who will begin their Letters journey in the next few weeks. In addition to those 1,000 educators across South Carolina, we are also beginning an IHE educator prep cohort. There are 40 professors and IHE faculty members who are scheduled to begin their Letters journey this Thursday, actually, will be the kickoff. Superintendent Weaver will be there to kick off that cohort meeting. So, Letters is well underway, and we are making plans to include everyone who has not been trained K3 to begin their journey in August. So, by next August, our plan is that everyone will have begun the two-years Letters journey and are working towards the science of reading training. In addition to that, Superintendent Weaver mentioned, we are also beginning our caravans for the selection of our high-quality instructional materials. Those -- I think they're having a hard time hearing me. Those caravans begin tomorrow in Charleston, and there will be several from across -- meetings held across the state. And those caravans are an opportunity for the vendors to propose their materials to the districts, and it's also an opportunity for the department to support districts in the selection of their instructional resources with an eye towards quality as we seek to improve student outcomes and also support our educators. Always keeping in mind, are these materials materials that we would use with our own children and in our own classrooms? And then, moving into the report on the HOPE Network districts, we are continuing to support Allendale and Williamsburg with technical assistance to help clarify our vision around student outcomes and align systems within those districts to improve the instructional program. We are beginning some very intentional work with the instructional team beginning in February, and we're also inviting additional districts who are tracking towards underperforming status to join us in that journey on that technical assistance to build out the instructional program and create alignment towards improving student outcomes. And then, also, we have been working on the rollout of our strategic compensation pilot in both Allendale and Williamsburg and finalizing those details. And in very short order, we'll be rolling out those details to the educators in Allendale and Williamsburg and are hoping to write some very large checks to those educators based on student growth this year and also use that pilot to help us recruit the best and brightest teachers from across the state to help us staff those schools next year as we work to improve student outcomes for students across the state. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Ferguson. Greatly appreciate you. Greatly appreciate everyone else. Sorry for any of the snafus or issues that came up. Just some things foul up at times. Do want to appreciate everyone. Thank you for the public comments. Thank you for all that we've had today. Please know that in other business, Tracy will be in contact with many of you. For those of you who were able to get there, please be reminded to turn in to her your travel forms and any other per diem that may be associated. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I assume so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Doc. Who might be a second?
A second.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, one day at a time. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Any ayes out there. Have a good day.